We will come to orders, we will rise to the podium. Our leaders, and we have to start. You are up.
I am the leader of the United States of America and the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of our Lord.
Ms. Allenek. Ms. Jarvis. Mr. Ramonopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Robiscotto.
Here.
Mr. Grill.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Ms. Alcieri.
Present.
Mr. Vono back.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to the Republican News Director, Southburn in my view, Senator, Township Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall of the Ward Office, setting upon a scheduled work meeting and helping to keep you in order. At this time, I would like to ask this to Marco, who will be present at the end of the conference. Yes?
Each year, our district participates in the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. The process starts by our community members and faculty members nominating certain teachers throughout our district. There is then a selection process, and our building principals are here tonight to honor their faculty who were presented with this award. So, in about late spring, all of our honorees will also go to a Bergen County brunch where they will be honored and recognized. So at this time, I would like to call all of our building principals up, and then we'll start the presentations. So normally, we start with our younger, lower buildings, but tonight, we're going to start with our high school principal, Ms. Laura Vuno, who's going to present to you her faculty. So, Ms. Laura Vuno.
Okay, first up is Mr. Tom Rowland. Mr. Rowland is a United States student in his school. Mr. Rowland is a master of education at William Patterson and his bachelor of arts at Bloomsburg. He's been a counselor at the high school for five years. Prior to counseling, this is interesting, he was a diaper in the United States Navy. He enjoys talking to students about the future plans, and his goals continue to be a positive resource for the LHS staff, parents, and most importantly, students. In addition to a counselor, he is a co-advisor of the Ultimate Frisbee Club and a 504-plan district coordinator. Outside of school, he likes to play baseball, travel, do sports nuts, and works as a volunteer with the Big Brother program. Congratulations, Mr. Tom Rowland. Okay, the High School Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Kim Huntington. Prior to teaching, Kim worked in the legal field as a legal assistant and office manager for seven years. She completed her bachelor's degree with a dual major in business administration and business education. This is her 10th year at the high school and her 18th year teaching business. Her teaching goals are always to intrigue, inform, and inspire her students to become lifelong learners. It's important, she feels, for students to know that the decisions that they make during high school will create opportunities for their future, and she wants them to be proactive and prepared to take advantage of those future opportunities. In her classroom, Mrs. Huntington teaches respect, empathy, gratitude, and responsibility. She knows her students are all future consumers, employees of business, even business owners, which all require these important values. Most satisfying to Kim is witnessing those lightbulb moments of learning, when students apply their knowledge to learn real-life scenarios. Kim is also the Yearbook Advisor and currently the Computer Club and Robotics Club Advisor. And congratulations to Mrs. Huntington, High School Principal.
I'd next like to call up Mr. Jan Geruso, who is the principal of Columbus School. He's going to present the awards for both Columbus and Jefferson.
Columbus Elementary School has two teachers that have been awarded the Governor Educator of the Year Award for the 2017-18 school year. Our first recipient is Ms. Diane Gress. Mrs. Gress has been educator of the Leonard's Public Schools since 1998 and currently teaches second grade at Columbus School. She has shown exemplary teaching to her students, has strong work ethic, and leads by example with care and concern for each of her students. She is a major asset to both Columbus School and the Leonard's School District. It has been a pleasure to work with Mrs. Gress for the past six years. Congratulations. Our next recipient at Columbus School is Mrs. Joy Marco Vuno. Joy has been an educator at the Leonard's Public Schools since 1999. During her years in the district, she has taught her students well and is exceptionally gifted in making her students feel comfortable and maintaining a positive atmosphere. It has been a pleasure to work with Mrs. Marco Vuno during her first year at Columbus School. I want to thank both Mrs. Gress and Mrs. Marco Vuno for a job well done. Congratulations to them. The Jefferson School recipient of the Governor Educator of the Year Award has been awarded to Ms. Demi Russo. Ms. Russo exemplifies professional traits through her interaction with her students. She has willingly assumed the leadership role at Jefferson School and is constantly striving for professional improvement. She conducts herself in a manner that clearly demonstrates that the welfare of her students is of primary importance. She is a tremendous asset to the Jefferson School community.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Geruso. Mr. Rizal, principal of Lincoln School, is going to present for Lincoln School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here representing both Lincoln School and Memorial Campus. We have an education professional who is receiving the Educator of the Year Award, Mrs. Angela Iamadelli. Mrs. Iamadelli retired by the state of Virginia in 2003. She's a pre-K from eighth-grade social worker and a member of our child study team. She works with all of the upper and lower elementary schools. She has a bachelor's degree from King University and a master's degree from Fordham. She's an amazing professional to work with, and one fun fact about her is that she speaks broken Italian. Or, as she says, more than a curse. Congratulations behind the curtain. The next Educator of the Year is a teacher at Lincoln School, Mrs. Paula Ellis. Mrs. Ellis has given education for 21 years, the last 18 in the Leonard's Public Schools. She started her career at Washington School as a sixth-grade through eighth-grade science and social studies teacher, and in the last 10 years has pursued her true passion about being a middle-school language arts teacher. She also graduated from King University with a bachelor's degree and has a master's from Mary Grove College in the art of teaching. Fun fact about Mrs. Ellis, she recently became a rekey practitioner. Congratulations, Mrs. Ellis. Next up is from Memorial Campus, the Educator of the Year, Mrs. Meg Memorial. Ms. Memorial is a third-grade math and science teacher at Memorial Campus. She began teaching in the Leonard's School District at Columbus School 10 years ago. She spent six years at Columbus and the last four at Memorial, and has been a member of various committees throughout the district. She has a bachelor's degree from William Patterson University and a master's degree from Ramapo College. Fun fact about Ms. Memorial is she is a Spartan, which is an obstacle course racer, has inspired mission paths and impressive students to join the active and healthy Spartan racing lifestyle. Congratulations, Mrs. Ellis.
Thank you, Ms. Vuno. Congratulations. Mr. Strublaznok presents for Roosevelt School.
I'm going to start the Teacher of the Year Award, and the recipient this year will be Ms. Jennifer Lambert. I'm going to set the table by saying that Ms. Lambert's students achieved the highest part scores in the district for sixth-grade math and science. You know, I think back to my second-year teaching days, and you're just about to spread your wings and fly, but, you know, this second-year teacher is actually soaring, and it's amazing to be part of it. I was sitting there the other day, and the students, they all have iPads, and they're able to submit their answers to her, and she gave feedback on the fly right back to the students with the following questions. It's just, it's actually fun to sit in the math class, even as an adult administrator in the building. She makes very astounding connections to the real world. You'll walk in, and she'll have online restaurant menus with ordering food and adding service charges and tips, and she transformed her room into an escape room. Those are big nowadays, but I think the only problem was, nobody wanted to leave. Nobody wanted out. You know, once you're in there, you're in there. Her pace is really quick, and she's just a little icon. Mrs. Lambert had the most votes by her parents, her faculties, faculty members, and our students for Teacher of the Year. Another thing that she does that, you know, really shows that she goes above and beyond is that she gives up her lunch hour to not only to her struggling students, but students who are looking to achieve just a little bit higher. And it's tough, you know, the trade-off between lunch and math sometimes, you don't get many kids, but that room was packed. Every day, when you walk by, there are a lot of students, and sometimes even waiting list to get in there in lunchtime. I can't take credit for her hire, Mr. DeCorso and Mrs. Marco did that. However, it's my job to work with Ms. Lambert and refine the leadership qualities that I see in her already as a second-year teacher. That's something that I've found to do at Roosevelt School. So it's my pleasure to give her the award, and congratulations to her. The second award is going to our school counselor, that's Mrs. Radigan. Mrs. Radigan is another non-tenured gem that I cannot take credit for the hire, but it was a wonderful hire. Again, she received the most votes by faculty, by parents, and the students who voted for this award. You know, during that voting process, there were countless ways that the parents and students articulated all the wonderful things that she has done for them, that typed it in in the additional info box, and I shared a lot of those with Mrs. Radigan, and it was nice to see that. I guess what I would say is, the thing that I admire most is just watching how she deals with the students. Sometimes it's easy in her role to solve a problem and just move on to the next thing, keep your train moving, but she takes the time to teach the students how to solve a problem, which sometimes is forgotten in today's day. You know, a lot of times with texting and having that device in our hands, you could be so brave, and you could say anything to anybody, she slows it down a little bit. And we do a lot of face-to-face communication with the kids. She works really closely with them, having them learn how to talk. Quite frankly, it's very uncomfortable for the kids. They don't know how to talk face-to-face. So working through that really empowers them on stopping the problem in the future for themselves, and that's something that I really admire most in Mrs. Radigan. Another staff member with true leadership ability, we're ready, just in her second third year. So again, congratulations, and it's my sincere pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vuno. Mrs. Cardino, who is principal of Franklin School.
Good evening, everyone. I am extremely proud to present this award this year to Ms. Warren Finch. As a new principal, I thought it might be challenging to be part of this process. However, when you have a touch on your building with the energy and enthusiasm that Ms. Warren Finch has, you recognize that she is a teacher that deserves to be acknowledged. Ms. Finch is one who eats by personal example. She is that teacher that arrives early and stays late each day, is always a willing participant in whole-school-related activities, and devotes much of her own time to her profession. Her kindness, fulfillment, and dedication to her students are evident. No matter when I may walk into her class, her students are always leaning with excitement, and smiles are always radiating from their little faces. If you're not having such a great day and you need some cheering up, it's Mrs. Finch's class that you should visit. Students, parents, and colleagues are very fortunate to have someone with the care and compassion that she possesses. I know that I am very grateful to Ms. Finch and all the wonderful things she brings to Franklin School. She has truly deserved to win this award.
Thank you, Mrs. Cardino. And Mrs. Christina Bernardo for Washington School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Bernardo, and it's my honor as principal of Washington School to present this year's Governor Educator of the Year Award to Ms. Kelly Staley. Ms. Staley is a dedicated, strong, yet compassionate member of our Washington School family. She not only performs her duties in the classroom, but serves on numerous committees and volunteers her time whenever needed. Her enthusiasm and passion for teaching is evident in her daily practices. She is committed to her students, her school, and her community, and is a valued member of our district. So please help me in acknowledging Washington School's Governor Educator of the Year Award for its recipient, Ms. Kelly Staley.
At this time, we're going to ask that everyone please come up so we can take...
You have an award.
Everyone, right. Everyone who got an award, thank you, so we can take one picture collectively as a group. I once again want to congratulate all of our teachers. We have a tremendous faculty here in the Leonard's Public Schools, who truly are committed to our entire student body, so congratulations.
At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our school business administrator, Mrs. Scott Isaac, and he will present the budget for the 2018-19 school year. It'll be a budget draft.
Hi, everyone. Those who have the agenda, I know I didn't make enough copies, but return to page four in the agenda, you'll have the roll-up under item six for the tentative school year 18-19. I'll cover these items first, then give you the detail behind the budget. Parent fund expenses, they call that Fund 11, it's $40,688,468. Capital outlay, that's Fund 12, that's $24,331. Transit to charter schools is $122,139. That makes the total general fund, $40,826,938. Special revenue, that's Fund 20, is $1,058,944. The debt service, which falls under Fund 40, is $649,622. When you combine the general fund and the other state support, that would get total expenditures and appropriations for next year's budget, it's $42,535,464. I will now read you and keep you with the district's policy of transparency line by line for each function that backs up those numbers I just raised here. Okay, tuition to public and private school, that's called Function 100, is $3,111,653. Attendance and social work services, that is Function 211, is $25,000. Health services, which is Function 213, that's $801,906. Other support services, that's the students, Function 216, is $741,720. Other support services for students, these are called extraordinary services, that's Function 217, is $176,020. Anybody hearing? Function 218 is other support services, that's for the regular ed students, that is $824,895. Student special services, that falls under Function 219, is $798,583. Function 221, which is improvement of instructional services, that's $414,585. Function 222, that is educational media services, that is $43,540. Instructional staff training services, that's Function 223, that's $11,305. General administration, it's Function 230, that's $927,412. School administration, that's Function 240, that's $1,842,588. Fiscal and central administrative services, that's Function 251, that's $589,840. Administrative information technologies, Function 252, is $186,550. Operation and maintenance services, that's called a lot of maintenance, maintaining buildings, that's Function 261, that's $823,831. Operation maintenance services, that's only custodial services, that's Function 262, Next line down is operation and maintenance services, that's care, upkeep of the grounds, that's the outside, that's Function 263, that's $45,000. Operation maintenance services, that's security for the building, that's Function 266, that's $95,000. Student transportation services, it's Function 270, that's $1,327,169. Drop down to employee benefits, that's Function 291, that is $7,846,424. Cafe fund transfer, that's covering the lunch program and food services, that's Function 310, that is $360,000. Pre-K, that's program now, 105, that's zeroed out, that's $161. Salaries for kindergarten, that's a teacher's program 110, that's $568,860. Salaries for grades 1 through 5, that's program 120, is $3,697,269. Salaries for grades 6, 7, and 8, that's program 130, that's $2,682,924. Salaries for grades 9, 10, 11, and 12, that's called program 140, is $4,194,635. Home instruction, that's program 150, is $25,000. General program, these are all the non-salary expenses, that falls under program 190, that is $1,112,534. Special education, learning and or language disabilities, that's program 204, that's $829,150. Special education resource room, program 213, that's $2,222,783. Special education preschool disabilities, that's program 215, that's $123,480. Pre-K disabled, that's program 216, that's $278,440. Special education home instruction, that's program 219, that's $9,000. Basic skills remedial, that falls under program 230, that's $484,688. Bilingual education, that's program 240, that's $240,200. School-sponsored co-curricular activities, that's program 401, that's $109,907. School-sponsored athletic activities, that's program 402, that's $671,921. Transfer to cover the pre-K deficit is program 800, that's $80,000. Charter school tuition, that falls under Fund 10, that's $122,139. Capital outlay is Fund 12, that's $24,331. Special services, that's state and federal aim to get under Fund 20, that's $1,58,904. The debt service is under Fund 40, that's $649,622. That gives you a total operating budget of $42,535,464. Which means 18-19 budget, we did what's called a zero-based budget format going into this, and right now, we have an approved budget tentative, and we have everything accounted for, and we're moving forward. Okay, any questions? All right, I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Marco.
All right, so what you just heard was a quantitative overview of the budget. And indeed, we are presenting a budget to the board as well as to the county for formal approval. Right now, it's just a draft. That is compliant to all state codes, that is grounded in our commitment to maximize instructional services, programs, and curriculum to students. However, it is also a budget that is unlike budgets of the recent past. In its balance, we had to recognize that the trend of past practice has been to overextend in spending, and we needed to be certain that our expenditures were accurate as recording them so that we could stay on budget for the 18-19 school year. In addition, we have some payback to do in the 18-19 school year to make up for some over-spending in past years. As a result, this budget process was extremely challenging. In addition, we have some payback to do in the eighteen nineteen school year, to make up for some over spending in past years. As a result, this budget process was extremely challenging. At its start, we went ahead, and as Mr. Weisick said, into the zero, uh, zero-based budget approach. That is, you identify all of your needs, wants, and wishes for the district, and you put all of those numbers into the budget and you run it. And then, of course, you're astounded by the number. So, you remove the wishes, and you see where you're at, and you keep in the wants. And soon you realize that we're not even close to where we need to be. So we remove the wants and then we stick at the needs. Unfortunately, this year, even with our needs in place, we recognized that we were going to be facing a year in eighteen nineteen that was going to have some structural changes necessary in order for us to provide that, a budget that was balanced and compliant. So we went through three processes. Typically, when faced with a budget like that, your first process would be to find where you can remove gigantic numbers. We did not do that at the start. We instead incorporated a process of grazing. So what we did was, we looked at all of our supply lines, all of our funding to programs, all of what we contribute to other types of activities, and we started grazing across them. What do the numbers look like if we take away five percent of that funding, ten percent, fifteen percent? And that's what we started doing, to kind of keep equity across all areas, without addressing anything one big at the start. Ultimately, in that first process, we wound up with, with, with a graze across, and I'll give you the details of that momentarily. After that grazing process, though, we realized that we were facing a tremendous shift, and we had to accept that. And it was at that second phase, the most challenging, whereby we really had to identify a group and consider a restructure, because we would no longer be able to afford that group in our current, uh, in our current structure. In the third phase, um, that's what brought us closest to the instructional programming and instructional services. And again, there, um, we made the final extractions, if you will, in order to then arrive at a budget that was compliant to code, that still maximized services and instruction to students, and yet also accounted for the needs of the district next year, as well as the requirements of us to make up for past practices of over expenditures. So what I'm going to provide you with now is a qualitative overview of some of the differences in this year's budget, and what some of those cuts that I spoke about, um, are in, 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 in generalities. Um, it is important, again, to stress, this is a budget draft. It will go to the county, and the county will review it thoroughly. The county may come back and say, "The budget was really good as is." The county may come back and say, "You know what, we think you're kind of over, over-lacking yourself some, some space here. We think it'll be safe to kind of cut back, and we may walk away, we have a little bit more spending power than we originally thought." On the contrary, the county can also look at it and say, "You know what, you're leaving your facilities and repairs and the maintenance, we really want to see a little more in these lines." And that would require us to cut one step deeper. So that being said, um, I'm gonna start talking about the supply areas that I spoke of. The 2018-19 budget has an approximate reduction of twenty-five percent in funding to district supply line, including office, instructional, um, ground, building and ground supplies, et cetera. There's also a district-wide reduction of about twenty-five percent in funding for supplies to athletic teams and extracurricular activities. We did, however, have some success in restructuring some of our current contracts. As you know, contracts are legally binding, as they are. But we went out on the approach to some of our longtime vendors, spoke to them about some of the challenges we were facing, and we were extremely pleased to know that they were willing to work with us and restructure some of those contracts. So we were able to gain some, um, maximize that spending power with those restructured contracts. With safety and security, we have included, as of last year, two part-time security guard positions. So we will be removing the two, um, school monitor positions at the high school that had previously taken on those tasks now assumed by the part-time security guards. We will also be including in the 2018-19 budget, money to construct a man trap vestibule, in other words, a second set of doors by the gymnasium entrance. And that is desperately needed for, um, for safety. We have that pretty much throughout the district, everywhere it's quite possible. It is possible to do there, we have that slated, and we feel it's vital to get that done next year. We will be decreasing our number of part-time custodians, and we will be hiring four additional full-time custodians. So again, we do say number of part-time custodians, and hiring four full-time custodians to add to that staff. We're going to have a reduction of our district-wide coaching staff, primarily in two areas. Our sprint track coaching staff will be decreased by one assistant coach, so that will go from seven coaches to six coaches. Our football coaching staff will also be decreased by one assistant coach, going from six coaches to five coaches. We will also be reallocating an assistant coach, um, we'll take away the assistant coach from the cheerleading level, and add an assistant coach at the winter indoor track level. And that, again, was all driven by number of students and needs. There will also be a district-wide reduction of psych-based extracurricular club and student offerings. Um, we're probably looking somewhere in the realm of about a forty to fifty percent reduction in those offerings to students. None, and I'm going to repeat this, none of those offerings will affect fine and performing arts or any other clubs or activities that are connected to curricular activities, sports, et cetera. So there will be no change to anything that involves our band, our choir, our harrow, um, any of our sports, et cetera. These will be the after-school lunchtime clubs. We will continue to offer as many as we can, and when we make those reductions, those will be driven by, um, student interest. And we will make sure to use that data when we determine the clubs that we will not be able to offer in the 2018-19 school year. There will be a reduction of part-time support systems district-wide. So we will be looking at a decrease in the number of aides. Compliance to state code will drive our hiring of aides. So where an aide is required as per state mandate, we will have an aide there. We also will be removing one of the permanent substitute positions at Lynnhurst High School. There's currently two, uh, two of those positions, we'll be changing that to one such position for the eighteen nineteen school year. That essentially covered the, um, first portion of, of our process. And the second portion was the most challenging. Because it could be inferred as though this group can go with little or no effect on, on, our, our curriculum and instruction. And that is so far from the case. Um, our supervisors are incredibly, incredibly important to everything that happens in our classrooms, and everything that is contributed to the management of the building. They are our liaison, they are closest to the people in the trenches, they see the classrooms on a daily basis, and they're able to report back, to be able to inform what changes we need to, to make in order to improve our instruction and improve our curriculum. However, we recognize that in this restructuring of our district, the standard supervisor of curriculum and instruction position was no longer suiting, um, the needs here. And so the decision was made to go ahead and abolish the supervisor of curriculum and instruction position as it currently stands. And there are five such, um, five such positions in the district. With the abolishment of that position, there will be the creation of a new position. One we know will be able to be offered to one interested candidate, and it is hoped that we will have money to offer that to two interested candidates. So we can be sure that our director of curriculum and instruction has the support of at least one, if not two, experts in this field contributing to the needs of our students when it comes to their learning. The final stage, as I had mentioned, got us closer to the students than we really wanted to have to get, but the numbers required it. We only have so much money to spend. So in the final phase of our process, we realized that we would have to be reducing the number of full-time faculty positions district-wide. Um, staff reductions are anticipated, um, at the, in the areas of student services, special services, and in the main content areas, particularly at the high school level. Our goal is to make sure that we do not increase class size in any way, that we do not, um, overextend the need of our facilities in any way. And we anticipate that these reductions impact will be that we may have, um, a few scattered reductions in elective offering at the high school. But we do not anticipate anything drastic to result from these reductions. There will also be a reduction of overtime opportunities to our full-time staff. And in addition to that, we will be adding one general education classroom. So we will go back to having, um, addition, an additional section of kindergarten, and we will also be adding a special education kindergarten classroom as well, increasing that number from one to two. So what does that mean we make about work? Again, we wait for approval from the county on this budget draft. Pending that approval, we have a difficult task of having to inform our, um, our faculty, our staff, um, what we can let them know as of this time. For those people who have, who have tenure in their positions, they will continue as tenured faculty and staff. Anyone who is part-time, hourly, um, non-contractual, those people will be receiving non-renewal notices, which simply state that at this time, we are not able to renew them in their positions for next year. Those same non-renewal notices will go to any non-tenure teacher or staff member. Across all associations. So anyone who is not tenured in their current position, in the position that they hold now, will receive a non-renewal notice. Again, meaning at this time, we cannot guarantee them a position in the eighteen nineteen school year. If a person is not tenured in their current position, but he or she holds tenure in another position in the district, they are all automatically informed in that letter that they do retain their tenure in the previous position. We then regroup. Once we have identified everyone who is tenured, everyone who is certain to remain with us in the eighteen nineteen school year, we then ensure that they will have placement. We then anticipate a monstrous number of vacancies. And that will be when we will host for those vacancies internally, in the hopes that people who we could not renew at the immediate time, we can now interview again for their position and, and be able to rehire them, and give them that notice well before the close of school. This will be a very fast-paced process, and it will be a very highly involved process. Our hope is to fulfill all of our vacancies and hire back as many of our, um, people who are not renewed as possible, well before the close of this school year, certainly before June thirtieth. But speaking with all transparent say, we will not be able to offer those opportunities to everyone. Any person who has a position that is being abolished or eliminated will receive a reduction in force notice, otherwise no minutes of breath. Meaning, their position is not going to be available next year. And whether or not that person is tenured or not, we unfortunately cannot provide them with that opportunity for that same position. Those people may apply for other positions, certainly, and we would love for them to be candidates in those areas. This has been extremely, extremely challenging. We faced tremendous difficulty in the composition of this budget. No district wants to induce its force or not renew outstanding teachers, administrators, or staff members. But we have a responsibility to the public to put forward a budget that is real, that identifies every single expenditure we see occurring in the upcoming school year, and making sure that your tax dollars, along with any other possible income we have, is allocated appropriately and used for the purposes that it's intended for. The Lynnhurst Public Schools will remain focused on maximizing use of all available funds in order to fill as many positions as possible, while also adhering to the need for the payback of monies owed from the past. I know that's a whole lot to digest, it's a whole lot to present to you. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your attention. And, um, again, it is, it is our hope that we get, um, positive news from the county, um, that we can get approval of this budget, or perhaps identify a few more, uh, areas of, of, of possible, um, spending power, and, um, make sure that we can then move forward with, with, with the process of organizing our personnel for the 2018-19 school year as soon as possible.
Thank you, Shwana. Quite interesting. Public hearing, um, of the meeting on agenda items. Okay, we'll go on to the board discussion of formal business agenda committee reports. Finance facilities and district planning. Chris?
Any board member? Any board member takes exception to any of the bottom list actions under the category of finance facility. The mission planning committee may so indicate now that the separate motion, you should accept that action to be as a paper. I make a motion to the following finance facilities and district planning to the actions of the board number one, two, five, and seven to ten to adopt it. Say it.
Paul Paul?
Ms. Ballin.
Four.
Mr. Enronopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rabbaschado?
Four.
Mr. Brillo?
Four.
Mr. Donovan?
Where are we going? Want to what?
One, two, five.
I had number five.
Seven.
Four.
Three, ten.
Yeah. Ms. Kee. Ms. Security.
Four.
Number six.
Yeah, I want to discuss. Uh, I make a motion, we discuss the executive session for, oh, uh, uh, we'll discuss the executive session. Can I do that? No, it'll be a problem, okay? My question is, does this show us a shortfall? Again, going forward into the, uh, twenty, twenty nineteen school year, four twenty million dollars? Uh, this should show an increase in the four twenty million dollars.
That was the balanced budget for the 2018-19.
Okay. So the current expense was, uh, forty point six million dollars, and now, the expenditures for twenty eighteen- nineteen are to be forty point five.
No, the general fund expenditure counts at that level.
Oh.
Okay. Plus or less? Four plus six point three. One, two percent for the, uh, for the.
Got you. All right.
I do want to point out that, yeah, I do want to point out, though, as stated, that within that amount, within that budget, there is money allocated for the payback of money.
Okay. Thank you. We think six or just...
I make a motion to adopt.
For number six.
I make a motion to adopt number six.
Six. Local vote for number six.
Ms. Malinick.
Four.
Mr. Angelopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Rappuskado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Education and curriculum. Josephine, please.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education and curriculum committee may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that items one through four be adopted.
Okay.
Local.
Ms. Malinick.
Four.
Mr. Angelopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Rappuskado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Policy, rules, regulations committee.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies and rules, regulations, committee, may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that we adopt items one through five.
Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Malinick.
Four.
Mr. Angelopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Rappuskado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Community relations and safety and security. Josephine.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of community relations and safety and security committee may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that items one and two be accepted.
Okay.
Roll call.
Ms. Malinick.
Four.
Mr. Angelopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Rappuskado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
New business?
There are two items on new business. Item one, it resolves the Lynn Hurst Board of Education's request for proposals, known as RFPs, consultation services in administering employee health benefits self-funded plan. Whereas insurance consultation services shall include complete management, including general administration, claim processing, and compliance investigation, statistical services, and performance of reinsurance coverage. Item two. Whereas a fiscal audit was conducted by the New Jersey Department of Education Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance regarding Title I to the period of July first, twenty fourteen, through June thirtieth, twenty fifteen, and therefore be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent, the board adopts a corrective action plan addressing findings five dash two, and the further, excuse me, finding five dash twelve, and be a further resolved upon the recommendation superintendent, the board authorizes an appeal of findings one through four.
Set.
And make a motion that items one and two be approved.
Set.
Okay.
Local.
Ms. Malinick.
Four.
Mr. Angelopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Rappuskado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Personnel.
Yes. If any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel, may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that one through ten be adopted.
Seven. Local.
Ms. Malinick.
Four.
Mr. Angelopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Rappuskado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Public hearing on non-agenda items. Okay. Like to call for adjournment?
Call for adjournment.
Roll call.
Ms. Malinick.
Four.
Mr. Angelopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Rappuskado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.